Okay, it's seven o'clock. I guess we're ready and we'll call this meeting to order. So as you know, this is our reorganization meeting, so if there's a rally up coming, we'll go through introductions and quick briefs and then we'll, our first action will be to seek an election of the chair. So at this time, I'll open with the introductions. My name is Mike Frank, superintendent of schools. I'll put it on my left.
Good evening, Mike Frank, assistant superintendent.
Chair here, right?
Good evening, Joe Basana, school business administrator.
Anthony Tenerola.
Jeff Boe.
Becky Stanton.
Mike Moran.
Rob Mullin.
Julie Gostucci.
Ryan McMahon.
Natalie Lara, student representative.
That's a long staff for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free, just, justice, and. Just a last reminder, the next meeting is being audio and video recorded, available on twobookas.org. So at this time, we've got our chair of Team A, election of chair, seeking a nomination for service chair of the twoschool committee for 2020, 2021 school year.
Dr. Flanagan, would I like to nominate Mr. McMahon?
Nomination for Ryan McMahon is our second.
I'll second.
Second by Becky. Any other nominations? That being said, do a voice vote for Mr. McMahon. Start with Mr. Town Hall.
In favor.
Mr. Paul?
In favor.
Mr. Stanton?
In favor.
Mr. Moran?
In favor.
Mr. Mullin?
In favor.
Ms. Gostucci?
In favor.
Mr. McMahon?
In favor.
Congratulations, Mr. McMahon. Mr. McMahon, the meeting is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I will seek a nomination for election of vice chair.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Rebecca Stanton for vice chair, please.
I will second that.
Thank you. Any other nominations for vice chair? Okay, we'll do a voice vote. Starting with Mr. Tenerola.
In favor.
Mr. Boe?
In favor.
Mr. Stanton?
In favor.
Mr. Moran?
In favor.
Mr. Mullin?
In favor.
Ms. Gostucci?
In favor.
In favor. Carrie, seven zero zero. Seek a nomination for recording secretary. Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Julie Gostucci. Second.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Voice vote? Mr. Tenerola?
In favor.
Mr. Boe?
In favor.
Mr. Stanton?
In favor.
Mr. Moran?
In favor.
Mr. Mullin?
In favor.
Ms. Gostucci? In favor. Carrie, seven zero zero. Two D, review legal meeting law, email telephone correspondence.
So, Mr. Chair, those two D and A, two D are annual informational items in the past RVA at school committee for your review. As you know, you are required to follow meeting laws and understand what all email telephone correspondence can be. It can never be in a forum. All the information is available in your drive, was last updated by, uh, in 2017, Mass General Law. So, that information is for your review. If you have any questions, please reach out to us. Again, that's a housekeeping thing that we give every year.
Two E, executive session guidelines?
Same, same story as the one before.
Excellent. To F, Paul, let's go.
Mr. Chair, this one, I thought we would, uh, potentially update the school committee webpage. I know that there were some conversations about that amongst some of the members as to what the role of school committee is during the election. And, excuse me, I know that came up on several different fronts. So, Mr. Piper, do we have something that we can show? If Michael has something that we can show, great. Um, so, as you know, our current webpage simply outlines what the meetings, agenda meeting materials are, and has contact information for you. This information right here, on the opening page, actually spells out what the role of responsibility of the school committee are. And then, on the tabs on the left side, the contact information, that'll be the lovely headshots we just took. Uh, and then, we've never really put out there what our subcommittee assignments are, so I think that's important to put out there, let parents know who's on the negotiating team. Uh, and we'll get a little bit more into the subcommittee information later. So, all the information that's pertinent to the school committees right there, as well as the task of the school committee. And again, I'll just remind, the three major tasks of the school committee are establishing policy, ensuring that all practices in twoschool public schools, all policies, maintaining oversight of the budget and developing a budget, and finally, hiring, evaluating, and terminating superintendent. Those are your three primary rules as outlining Mass General Law. So, I think it's a good spot to have that, and, uh, you know, I'd like to work on refining this a little bit, get this more current, up to date, and at some point, it brings back to the committee for a final vote, to say that's what we want to see on our webpage, and we'll go from there. But I probably teased it out tonight, as a part of our role as school committee. And thank you to Mr. Piper, who worked tirelessly on that today. I was probably working about 6:35 before he drove over here to finalize that. So, thank you, Derek, appreciate it.
Excellent. Two G, preliminary discussion on school committees, subcommittees.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, in your drive is the subcommittees that we annually have with school committee members. So, basically, the practice we've done in the past, and certainly we can amend that if we need to, is we provide you what the committees and the subcommittees are, we provide you a brief description of the subcommittees, and then I ask, within the next week or two, that you email me your top three choices for subcommittees, at which point, we'll look at what everyone wants for the top three choices, and fill in the subcommittee assignment sheet accordingly. So, tonight, there's no action on that, but it's an opportunity for you to look at the subcommittees. If you have questions, please feel free to reach out to me. We did put a description of what the subcommittees are in there. As you know, some of the subcommittees, uh, meet more frequently than others. If you're on negotiation team, that's, that's a lot more meetings than, than the single signer per se. Policy meets pre-regularly. The superintendent evaluation for me meets pre-regularly. So, so think about what your schedule, your work-life balance is, and if you've been signed up accordingly, that'll be great in the same, but we want to make sure that not one member has those top three committees, not the most time consuming. So, um, we'll try to balance it so that's our ability. We'll bring a draft back to you in August, well, actually, potentially July 21st, uh, and we can talk about that and make some decisions on finalizing those committees, and don't get in front of that picture.
Excellent. Before we send those out, if we haven't already, um, could we pre-copulate the ones that I know Chair McMahon has to sit on?
Yes.
Is that way, we know how many members are remaining?
Fair enough. And just in, in full disclosure, Becky and Tony are ineligible to serve a negotiation committee for conflict intentional reasons. Attention.
Thank you. I have three preliminary minutes. Take a motion to approve the June 9th, 2020 school committee minutes and executive session minutes. Executive session minutes will not be released at this time.
I'll make that motion.
I'll flag it.
All in favor? Vote. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Okay, seven zero there. Correspondents.
Chair, in your drive, your front town hall, uh, May revenue report, uh, it's good information. It's good preliminary information. Uh, we still don't know where our budget's going to be. We don't know what's going to land. Uh, we are operating on a 112 budget for, uh, for July for sure, most likely for August as well, uh, in recent conversations with the town administrator. So, uh, it's good because it allows us to see some trend analysis as to what the revenues are for the town of Tinsborough, uh, but certainly, it's kind of stand by and wait at this point until they figure out, if you can help, what it's going to look like.
Any other comments and questions? Next up, share the success.
At TES, Mrs. Anderson, the art teacher, is putting together a fun artsy bear hunt in town. For information on that, you are encouraged to follow @tigerartists on Instagram and check out their website. At TMS, the custodial staff is fiercely cleaning the building and working with the administrators on how to set up the classrooms for the fall. And the 19 to 20 middle school yearbooks are being handed out on Friday morning as the company completed the books and has shipped them. At THS, preparations are underway for graduation on July 19th, and the staff is preparing for school in the fall. Mrs. Gosterson is reaching out to the senior sidekicks as they prepare for what orientation will look like, whether it is a meal conference, presentation, or something else. And last of the class of 2021 prom has been booked for Friday, May 28th, at the Blue Ocean in Salisbury, Massachusetts.
Excellent. Thank you.
Salisbury, Massachusetts, on a fine night. We're getting our minds worth out of those limousines. It's been a long ride. Beautiful.
But it's in bag.
There are no subcommittee updates at this time. On personnel, staff attaining professional status for FY21, it's Collingbader, Margaret Goffier, Sarah Eisenberger, Sydney Pelletaner, Zach Richall, Samantha Rosa, Daniel Van Delver. Notification of new hires, we have Angel Cardagina as a network systems administrator, Rachel Collins, a grade four teacher, Kayla O'Shea, who's a grade six to 12 psychologist, and Carrie Hurdle as a TMS computer science teacher. Welcome to those guys. Staffing roles with non-professional status, Gianna Bensaya, Katie Cardinal, Melanie Shandene Klansky, Timothy Doust, Kristen Erickson, Marla Fisher, M.T. LaRochelle, Danielle Warren, Alexandria Panagiotakis, Deborah HoClementa Anderson, Melissa Rogiri, Janie Silva, Jennifer Spanos, Stephen Stanley, Hannah Stowens, and Catherine Wells. Notifications of resignations, Sarah Barnes, a TES parent, Melissa Sullivan, a kindergarten teacher, Andrea Schwartz-Niavis, a grade two teacher. Notification of reduction in force, Bo Barber, THS science. Item nine, unfinished business. Task force updates. Dr. Flanagan?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, perfect. So, so, um, I hope everyone can see that. I'm just going to stay distant away from it because that's not fair. So, um, so I think it's important to, um, keep the committee abreast of the work that's being done right now to prepare for the fall reopening of the schools. As you know, we have nine committees working, five specific to teaching and learning, four specific to operations. Those committees fall under the umbrella of seventeen member task force. These committees are looking at everything right now, answering a lot of questions, looking at the initial DESI guidance that came out, and they're going to make a recommendation of that task force. That task force is made up of teachers, community members, administrators, uh, and truly, a cross-section of all stakeholders in the district. So, to really keep the school committee abreast, I think it's most important to kind of go through the work that we've done, so you know where we are, give you an update as to where we are today, and talk about our next step moving forward. So, we'll go to the first slide, Mark. I think one of the things we've been dying for prior to getting our guidance was, what can we do? And what's it going to look like? We needed to be put in a box. We had no idea what DESI was going to tell us was acceptable, allowable, or permissible. So, at that point, we were striving to figure it out. And we needed to be put in a box, like everyone else in the state, so that no one district goes off in one direction very different than anyone else. When you think about that, we can't have Tinsborough on one schedule and Charleston on another schedule because some of our teachers live there. So, we need a consistent schedule across the state, which is what we're dying for. We also know that this box that we're going to work beside has to do with whatever the Mass Department of Public Health says. We know that we have to work through collective bargaining with our unit employee groups, and we know that our FY21 budget is still in flux at this point. So, all that information, coupled with DESI guidance, tells us what we can and cannot do as a district. I think the uncertainty we experienced in March, there was frustration to people because they wanted to do more, we wanted to, we could only do what the box allows us to do. So, our task right now is to find out what the parameters are going to be, and do the best we can to take those students inside that box. And some of those solutions, we know are fun. They may not be best practice. We know what best practice is. We know that young children need to work in groups, work collaboratively, work creatively, and shit. We know that. But it's not feasible, and it's not, it's a box you can't do. So, what we have to do is we have to work to find the best solution that we can inside that box. Next slide, Mark. Tiger King, Frozen Two, and Little Mouse. We cannot think like last year. That's not going to work. Send that all onto every staffing identity. We cannot pick up our operations, our staffing pattern from 1920 and place it in 2021. Not going to work. Square pegged on a wall. We need to think different. We need to think the next year. So, everyone likes to tie it in reference. Um, I did watch it every episode. Um, but we, we got to be looking ahead, and that's, that's what I tell you. No, don't think like last year. Right, next slide, please. That being said, we got the DESI guides, two weeks ago, plus two weeks ago. And the thing that we're preaching now, everyone in the district, is adaptability. We don't want to be flexible, because flexible means we're going to accept something. We want to be adaptable, so that if we do have to ship on the fly, we're ready for it, and we're going to attack it, and we're going to break plan. So, adaptability to me, my, my interpretation is very different than being flexible. We're going to be adaptable. We know that DESI wants three plans for us. They want a remote learning plan, they want a hybrid plan, and they want to know what a modified in-person plan looks like, assuming we're in phase one, two, or three of coming back in fall. We know, right now, coming back without restrictions is an option. Right now, you heard from the government that we're looking at Plan One. What does a modified in-person school day look like? The hybrid model, we haven't talked about yet. That's the next year we're going to talk about. But right now, focusing on number one. Number three, remote learning, we've already done it. We can do it better, and we're going to do it better. We're going to ratchet up expectations, we're going to, we're going to think about what remote learning looks like differently. But we know that we can, if we have to pivot to remote learning, we've done that here as a district, and you saw the survey recently came out. We're going to talk a little bit about that down the road. So, right now, it's about modified in-person learning. Right, next slide. So, as we think about that, we put some parameters on it. Mark said, uh, took the tape measure, walked on all the schools, all the classrooms, we measured out, we said, okay, modified in-person learning. We know that we can get 22 student desks with one teacher desk in every LMP classroom. We know that we can get 18 student desks and one teacher desk in every middle school and high school classroom. Those are the parameters. We also know that we're being advised to schedule in a cohort model. Well, that's pretty easy at our elementary school. It's a little bit more difficult at middle school, and virtually impossible at high school, but we need to do the best we can to think about cohort scheduling. How do we keep as few kids as possible in contact as possible, and, and track schedules so that the kids that take AP bio that also wants to take band, is traveling, the kid that takes AP bio but doesn't want band and wants steer. How do we work that schedule? That's very difficult. Our high school teams work incredibly hard on that. DESI, we know that every teacher in this district right now will be able to teach 20% outside their lessons. Is it best practice? No, it's not. But it's a solution. If we have a math teacher teaching four sessions of math, could they teach an English session? Intentionally. We're not going to get them, and we hope not to be there, but it's what DESI said. Drop of precautions, that's a big one. We know that band, as we know it, can't happen at the high school or middle school. Can't have band having drop of precautions. We also know that the theory that we know can exist as a countermeasure. So, that's a good point there. Physical education, we can still do physical education, but the kids need to be socially distanced, they can't share equipment. What does that look like? Very different than physics classes we all grew up in. We know that cycling hundreds of kids through here at 20 minutes isn't realistic. So, we're talking about lunches in the classroom. What does that look like? If kids are in the classroom, they take their masks off. How do we address that? And we know that there can be no shared equipment. One of the easy answers is, oh, put art on our car. Oh, the art teacher go around and rubs. That's great, as long as everything's a one-time consume, and we're not sharing paper, pencils, whatever. So, these are some of the parameters we brought up. This is what the DESI guide said. And we brought this to the task force, and we said, thinking about this, this is part of the box. What questions, concerns, and worries do you have? Now, if we just let people go out and do that, they'd go everywhere because your mind's memories follow them. So, we brought up a framework for them. And we talked about Bowman and Deal. Bowman and Deal, uh, organization of change, experts and leaders. And they created what we call four frames of leadership. Basically, the four frames of leadership, focus, you're thinking. So, as you're faced in any organization with a complex situation or complex decision, Bowman and Deal suggest you look at any decision through these four frames. And the reason they say that is this. Some of us, all of us have infrastructure. All of us have infrastructure. I'm a political structural person. I'm an HR person. So, when I look at decisions, I'm going to look at two lenses only. And the reason we use this framework for our discussions is because as we broke down into these groups, it kept everyone talking about one specific topic and kept it focused for the entire time. Let's look politically at this situation, and we spent 10 minutes talking about that. We, no take is ever approved. Drunk down everything, the parents, the teachers, the community members saying, okay, now let's ship. What about HR? What about the people who have to live in that environment, work in that environment? What about the symbolic side of that? The kids that missed graduation, prom, fifth grade moving on, eighth grade moving on, Russian DC trip, Camp Boone, all those things that make things look great, all the ceremonial stuff that's gone. Something that could be beyond us. So, we had a conversation about all of those things, and we had all the work through those four different lenses. And we gathered all that information. And this is all the information, these are all the comments, these are all the worries from the task force. And this information right here will drive us through our next steps. These are the questions that we need to think about. These are the questions that are the front burner issues that frightens my. What about this? What about that? So, having a cross-section of the task force, since you have a representative community asking hard questions around four focused topics, gives us feedback that we can start to think about and formulate, including our plan. So, as we think about what a modified in-person learning plan looks like, the model looks like, we know what our stakeholders are concerned about. Can we answer everyone? Can we satisfy room? Absolutely not. That's not realistic. But it goes back to that first slide. We're going to find the best solution possible for Tinsborough Public Schools working inside that box. That's our goal. Next slide, Mark. After we did that activity, we had the committee chairs, all the committee chairs, just provide a quick update as to the work that they've done to this point. Um, so, we have still our committee chairs here tonight, so I thought it made sense for them to give you a one or two-minute commercial about the work that they're doing, so you can understand where we are moving forward. And then I'll come back up. So, Mark, why don't you start with quick master assessment?
So, the CIA, uh, committee has met multiple times, and it's worked a little bit online as well. Um, and basically, our two primary focus areas have been trying to understand how we're going to figure out exactly what students know and are able to do, um, from an academic standpoint, when they return to school in September. So, there's no doubt we've talked about it in this room already on other occasions, that every student, whether it's your higher chief, highest achieving student, remote swimming learner, is not going to be where they would have been in September, based on what we all just went through. So, because of that, we're looking at pre-assessment and progress monitoring tools that we currently use, as well as some that we can develop in-house, or potentially even purchase down the road, so that when kids come back to school, we can not only take care of them socially, emotionally, but we can do some kind of dipstick and dive on to figure out exactly where they are, and that'll allow our content leaders, our administrators, and our teachers to plan their curricular adjustments accordingly. The second big area that we're looking at is professional development. Um, we were waiting for the guidance, we're also waiting for the scheduling committee to do a little bit more work, and when that takes place over the next seven to 10 days, then we'll dive into the professional development needs of teachers around instructional practices, teaching in a blended model potentially with students in-house and out, um, so that we are ready to shift and pivot when we need to. So, those are our two big focus areas right now.
So, before we go with Derek and technology, just to remind, these committees, there are probably seven to 10 people on every committee, just so you know that. Again, stakeholders are up. Derek, technology?
Sure. From the technology side, our committee is looking at the people process and the technology all wrapped in one. So, we know that when we shifted to the remote learning back in March, um, it kind of hit us in the face, but we did a pretty good job of quickly identifying who needed what at their houses. We got some devices out there. We're taking that information along with some information from the survey that went out, um, to make sure they were really ready for if and when we do either Plan B or C in the models of Doug Flanagan talking about. Make sure that students go there, and the families have what they need, both technology-wise and also the support-wise, uh, whether they're using their own devices or our devices. Also, looking at the in-house side of things, again, along with the sharing. There are a lot of shared devices at the elementary school. How and can we still share devices? What does that clean regimen look like? Um, the middle school is a one-to-one environment, so that's a little easier. And the high school mostly is people IOD, so we're pretty good there in terms of devices as well, but there are some shared devices, um, up there as well. On the learning side, we're also looking at, you know, what went well with our teachers when they all of a sudden had to jump into this new world of remote learning, and how we had to ramp that up. As, uh, Dr. Franco, how do we make that better for if and when we have some or all of our students at home again in the near future? So, really, it's just a whole bunch of readiness planning and, and making good progress there.
Thanks, Derek. So, how about social emotional?
Re-acclimating is probably one of the hotter topics of the social emotional committee, looking at how are we going to re-acclimate our students who are going to leave school now for six months at the end of summer? What will that look like? What measures do we need to take into, uh, take into place, as well as looking at strategies for self-care for our staff. So, talked about check-ins for our students and what that looks like with our counseling staff, but being mindful of staff and doing check-ins with that group as well. Um, so, those are the, the bigger discussions that are taking place. There is certainly the concerns for masks, and how does that work within the building? What do check-ins look like? Um, and a lot of that teases into some of the other committee work as well. You know, the, to the CIA's point, you know, what's going to be looked at in terms of assessments, where students, you know, might be coming into different places. So, I think social emotional lends itself to having lots of concerns, um, that also break within, you know, the other groups. They certainly go into the health committee as well. Uh, but the re-acclimating is one of the bigger ones, really wanting to make sure that the building of rapport happens quickly with our teachers and our students, knowing that at a moment's notice, a remote learning could take place, and we want to build trust and have those students feeling as comfortable and confident with those new teachers. Where this situation, you know, we were just in, they luckily had an opportunity to have in-person instruction with teachers for many months before we shifted gears to remote learning. So, there was a rapport and trust built there. We really want to hit the ground running in the fall with doing just that, knowing that something could happen that comes out of our hands quickly, and we're going to need that, uh, those relationships intact.
Speaks to adaptability. Our ability to appear quickly and do it well, efficiently. Uh, Carrie, help them, Willis?
Hi. Good evening, everyone. So, I have the pleasure of co-chairing with Michelle Riley, our director of school nursing, who happens to also be a member of the Board of Health here in town. Um, we've spent a great deal of time, um, our committee work has been focusing on looking at the CDC guidelines, looking at DPH, um, and most recently, DESI's guidelines specific to health and wellness. Um, we've talked a lot about health education and what that looks like, and how that will shift from what we traditionally are teaching students. So, there'll be a lot of education around hand washing and hygiene, um, and I think we're going to have to do a lot of work. We've talked a lot about the importance of all the mitigation factors, so not just social distancing and the mask wearing, um, but staying home when children are sick or when staff members are sick. Um, and that's hard for our staff. Our staff really, um, work hard to be here at school, and, um, you know, I think we're going to have to be mindful of what that looks like when we do have staff members out. And so, that's, some of the committee work is looking at making sure we're educating families and our staff members, um, around signs to watch for and protocols to adhere to. We're going to spend some time really digging into when to students, send students to the health office, or when staff members should be visiting the health office, um, and limiting that, and looking at anyone who is symptomatic, and what precautions we need to take, um, if they do need to go to the health office. We've talked about the physical location and what that looks like. We've talked about the dismissal process for those, um, students and/or staff members. Um, and we spent a lot of time the last meeting talking about cold and flu season. Um, so, in particular, this building was hit pretty hard last winter. And so, thinking about what that would look like in, you know, late fall, early winter for us, and the importance of making sure we educate families to have their children vaccinated. Um, and Michelle is actually working with the Board of Health to see if we can have a site here over the weekend to be able to offer, um, the flu vaccine. So, you know, a lot of important work, um, and it's been nice to have the, the school nurses on that committee because they are the experts, and, and they're reaching out to their counterparts in neighboring school districts. And we're relying on that information to work together.
Julie, do you have a budget update?
Um, so, a lot of our work, uh, remains to be done. We had, uh, preliminary meetings just to, to get some of the information out to, uh, the committee members regarding, um, some potential HR issues, uh, staff that might be out, the need for substitutes, uh, budget, everything that goes on in the school affects your budget, and, um, adaptability certainly is a great word when it comes to your budget. Each and every year, not, and this year is certainly not typical. Uh, I anticipate a lot more of our work will get more involved when curriculum and instruction and scheduling- Uh, I anticipate a lot more of our work will get more involved when curriculum and instruction and scheduling start giving some information to the task force, then we'll be able to go out as a committee and come up with some best recommendations for them.
So Joe brings up a great point. You know, in terms of special education, physical plan, transportation, those are all kind of, they've met briefly, but they're sitting waiting for the ninth committee. You see eight up there. I didn't put the nine one up there. The ninth committee is standing there. If we don't know what we're going to do or what it potentially looks like, none of this is relevant yet. So that being said, Mark, next slide. Sarah's the chair of the scheduling committee, and she was kind enough to let me, uh, take over the last couple of meetings. Um, thank you. So, uh, so we met on June 24th. And on June 24th, we challenged every administrative district, feel aware, think of this school as an empty shell. That's the first one you did. Don't say that's a fourth bedroom. Don't say this is a cafeteria. This is a shell. And as we think about those parameters back to Waltonville, 22 kids in a classroom, no lunches served at all in the cafeteria, how do we maximize our space? How do we maximize our staff? How do we maximize our physical plan and all our budget, Mike? So that we can provide the best education possible, the best solution possible inside the box? How do we do that? So we challenged that on June 24th to do that. And our administrative team sat by building in here, um, and, and they worked hard. They worked really hard. And they came up with some immediate glaring concerns. Mark? July 1st, specialists. Specialists is an issue across all three schools. How do we do phys ed, art music, PE, computers, uh, TV media, domain? How does it work? How do we schedule? Also remember, as you know, we want teachers, we're teaching at all three schools. Well, if we're going to cohort schedule, we can't have one person and he can go to all three schools. What does that mean? Think about our specialists and our short camps. We share three specialists covering between the middle school and high school, back and forth. What does that mean? How do we do that when we try to minimize the workload? Very difficult. So we had that conversation about, okay, we have to assign specialists to a building. We can't cross the cabinet building with specialists. We have to say that's the building you had to go to. So that was one of the conversations we had. Facilitating lunches, not bad at the high school, not bad at the middle school, amended at the elementary school. If you, if you know, during the day, this essentially serves as two caps. Half the cap is on one lunch schedule, the other half's on another lunch schedule. When this group leaves, another group comes in. So there's constantly grade levels crossing in here. This is a dynamic lunch in this school. How do we do that? What does that look like? Storage? If you walk down the front hallways right here, you'll see all the furniture that exists in typical elementary school classrooms. Well, if we need to maximize our space because any kids on the classroom, we need to move that furniture up. We're going to pull. Kindergarten. Kindergarten was an issue. That was a conversation. At the top of the conversation, as the committee knows, we went to a full day kindergarten last year. In terms of staffing, a K to five, K to 12 district, and maybe that on my own, how do we do that with a full day kindergarten schedule? We asked the staff the concerns that we need to think about. Preschool. Preschool is a problem. As we think about what our schedule potentially looks like, the modest staff, deployment of resources, um, it becomes very difficult to, to think about how we can offer our integrated preschool model, given what we need to do in K to 12 throughout the district. Next slide, please. Before we talk about preschool, does anyone have any question on where we are in terms of committee work and task force? Or any real questions yet?
Yes. I do have one question for Carrie. Taken into consideration, um, potential for, um, more absences with our staff. Typically, we would backfill that with, fill them with substitutes. Is there any thought to bringing them in? It is a big flow school year. Identify, identifying and bringing them in and start training them early on our process so that they're not coming in not knowing what they're doing, what's expected of them in this time?
Yeah. I, I, that's something that we've talked a lot about. That was, um, probably a good portion of the HR, um, committee was really looking at, what is it going to look like for sub coverage? Um, we, we tossed around a lot of different ideas. We talked about, um, potentially employing long-term subs so that we have them, um, from the get-go so that we can do that training, um, and review with them before the start of the school year. Because it's inevitable that we're going to need substitutes.
Our pool isn't deep. We don't have a lot of subs.
No, I know, but it's.
It's, it's, it's nightmarish on some days. Um, so that's a real concern that we have. Again, given to your other point, you know, we don't know which staff won't be able to potentially come back to work. So that's another unknown right now. And that's just something we're going to have to tackle in HR budget later on, I'm guessing. But yeah, all fair points.
Just one more comment, just a comment I wanted to make. Derek, at the beginning said, uh, you thought you did a pretty decent job back in March in getting everything going and getting the teachers to come in. I just want to say, I think you did a phenomenal job. And you continue to.
Agreed.
Thank you very much for that.
That's a great job.
Dr. Fung, I may just first people I want to, um, but there is a member of the school committee on every one of these.
Uh, most of them, please.
Most of the committees as well. So we are very engaged in these committees, um, going forward.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely. You know, this work began six weeks ago, and it's been non-stop. It's been, uh, uh, all we're talking about, every day, all we're talking about. But right now, I want to get to the point of, we need to schedule. We understand what the box is, we just have the parameters, just what does this look like? What does this really look like? And how do we build a schedule? And how do we start thinking about who a fourth grader teacher might look like? Who could be? What class is that? That's what the parents want to know. That's what we're trying to figure out. So our goal, our goal is to have those plans done for July 21st task force meeting. We want to come in and say, here's what our remote learning plan looks like, and here's what our in-person plan looks like. We're worried about the hybrid after July 21st. That's what we're focusing right now. That being said, to do that, to do this work, we challenged administrations, and they went out straight all the way to find out how we can stop the building. Preschool is an issue. We are mandated as a district to offer K to 12 education. We're also mandated special education services. Can you speak to that briefly?
Sure.
Yep.
So pre-K specifically.
Please.
That would, um, still be required of us as a department, just like K to 12s would be. So if a student is identified and they're pre-K, then the district does need to continue to support education services.
So as we think about preschool, number of teachers in preschool?
Five full-time.
Five full-time teachers in preschool, no power professionals in preschool, nine?
Eight.
Eight. Thirteen staff members in preschool. We, a couple of facts. We budget a potential revenue for preschool of $230,000. That's tuition for parents. That's assuming all parents are going to send it. I'm not sure that's the case because of the feedback I'm getting across the district, not preschool specific, but across the district, about what concerns parents have on the older. That being said, we currently have five positions that we're not filling. Four power professionals, one teaching position, totally $175,000. As we think about staffing, K to 12 district, and knowing that 22 is the number here, 18 is the number on across the river, how do we get bodies in the classroom to support these kids? These kids go in that grade four is what was what? 24 kid, 24 class?
Yes.
24 students per class in grade four. We can't cover. So we need to think logically about this. And I bring this to you tonight, that it's our recommendation that we hold off on preschool suspension for a month for one year. We need that staffing to support K to 12. We need the physical space in this school to put kids in classrooms. We need to not hire any more staff with the unknown of our $21 budget. So I'm looking to the committee to support us and recognize the fact that if we're going to come up with the best K to 12 model we can, we absolutely need that staff elsewhere in the district.
If I may, there's, um, how many classrooms is that free up here in the district?
Five classrooms. But for one point, and I forgot to bring this up. Can you talk about a preschool program and the educational component of it? Thank you.
Yeah. So as Sarah said, we are required, um, to provide a preschool program for our students with disabilities. Um, currently, we have just under 40 students identified on IEPs ages, um, three to five. And when we look at best practice and what's best for students with disabilities, it's an integrated preschool model, meaning we bring in typical peers. And those typical peers, um, are tuition-based. Families pay tuition to send their child to our integrated preschool program. A preschool program, um, the, the foundation of it is play. That's how children learn and they develop. Um, and when we think about the parameters that the state has put forth for guidance for K to 12, now, we haven't received anything for preschool, so I think that's important to know. But right now, just based on the guidance that we have for K to 12, thinking about socially distancing, thinking about not sharing materials, thinking about mask wearing, and then envisioning what a preschool program looks like with those parameters for three, four, and five-year-olds, it, it's, it's not even feasible. Um, I, I just don't even know what it would look like. Take away circle time, take away blocks, take away play. Um, that is what a preschool program is. And if we strip all of those pieces away, we've now lost the integrity of an integrated preschool program. We're going to do right by the students that we're required to educate in preschool. Um, and we really feel that we can do that solidly with a remote learning plan, um, in conjunction with some in-person, um, services, with our related service providers, speech, OT, PT, whatever's outlined in the student's IEP, we will follow, um, and we will do so in a comprehensive manner. But to bring in the typical peers, which we already questioned, are families even going to send their child, knowing that it potentially is inevitable that we're going to have to move back to remote learning? Um, or why risk if I'm already only sending my child three days a week, three half-days a week, um, and paying that tuition? Um, you know, I think one of the things we talked about, just the hardship that is on families, knowing that perhaps in, in November, we're back to remote learning, and how can we in good faith charge those families tuition when we're providing a remote learning service? Um, so there were many, many factors that were, um, really taken into consideration when we came up with this proposal. We spent time talking to other school districts. We spent time, Sarah, um, Brian, myself, um, on a, a conference call with the state. Um, and they are coming forth with hopefully an application for districts to, um, apply for this one-year waiver, um, where we wouldn't have an integrated model. Um, they know it's, it's unrealistic, it's not developmentally appropriate, um, and it really puts districts in a tremendous hardship. So that's sort of how we got to where we are at this point.
And it's been six weeks of conversation. This is not something that we're reporting in the sky. And I think this committee recognizes it because, if you recall in the spring, once we went to remote learning, this committee took a vote to refund money to parents, knowing that the kids weren't getting the experience that many of the parents had paid for. So that's something we need to consider. So, um, what questions does anyone have that we can answer? Yes.
Um, how many students are identified with a disability and a need for a re-admission by coming to an in-person preschool?
So currently, we have approximately 35.
Right. So how many, how many parents aren't aware that there was a need for extra services? And then once they came to preschool, the teachers identified them?
Oh, through EI? I'm sorry. Yeah. I, I don't have an exact number on that, but there's a law called Child Find. Um, so pediatricians, parents, um, anyone can refer a child, um, at any point in time. Typically, any referrals that we get outside, um, are really, um, spearheaded by families or pediatricians that have concerns about their child hitting developmental milestones. I would say it's fairly infrequent that our paying tuition families are families that are then found eligible for special education services. I don't have an exact number though.
I think that's not the number.
So there's no real concern about students slipping through the cracks, so to speak?
Well, again, I think the law really protects that with Child Find. We have, as a district, we have to put information out of if you are concerned about your child's developmental, um, milestones, please reach out to the school district, and it's our obligation to evaluate them.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
I just want to talk a little bit about how this $175,000 that won't be brought in affects the budget. And you're also saying that all these teaching positions will be, still be offered to these teachers, but in different roles, correct?
Correct. So the goal is to keep everyone, every employee of the mission home and reassign them throughout the school. So as a global, if you take one of the biggest grades, I apologize, is it grade four?
Yes.
Uh, grade four is our biggest grade at the elementary school, 24 kids per class. Physically can't do it. So we need some more teachers, we're certified elementary teachers, to pick up accession for two so that we can alleviate the staffing pattern or help, um, the class size. So all people will still be employed. These positions right here are currently vacant. We won't fill these positions. So that saves us $150,000 on our expense side, but we're also losing potentially $230,000 on our revenue, revenue side. Assuming we were going to get full tuition from all parents that were going to send their students to preschool. And I don't think that's a realistic assumption at this point right now either. Um, this is a conversation we've talked about for, for, for weeks. I think one of the things that we're concerned about is the law. We wait, if we can't in fact staff our kids in K to five and schedule this building, you know, we want to give parents as much lead time as possible to make alternative plans. But everyone right now in the district would remain whole. We wouldn't be displacing a row of students, at least not. So Mr. Chair, that's, that's the presentation. Um, again, I'm looking for some direction on preschool. And that's where we are. The absolute intent would be, this would be a one-high, one-year high-end for a program, provided we're not in a modified in-person learning environment next fall. You know, if we can bring this back, we'll bring it back next year. What we don't want to do is all of a sudden, there's a vaccine in November, we're going to try to spare a bit to create a new program in December or January. We're going to have kids that have already made relationships throughout the school with other teachers, and that's not fair to that. We need to say this year, it is what it is, and the intent is to bring it back the following year.
Thank you. 9B, school committee meeting schedule?
We're going to vote for support on that. Uh, that's, we'll get to it. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. That was tied in. But it flowed with the presentation, so I just kept going.
Mr. Check, can I make a motion and take 10A out of order? Vote on it this time.
Second. Discussion? David?
Hi.
Post? Carrie 700.
Thank you very much.
10A, roughly, you just gave us this information. So seek a motion to suspend preschool toward the Friday. Why, it pains me greatly, and as I'm sure it pains everyone. I do believe that this is the best solution for this one year. So I will make the motion to support, uh, this plan of suspending preschool for one year.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Post? Carrie 700.
Thank you very much, David. We'll put communication out later this week to families. We'll meet with preschool teachers this week as well, so we'll talk to our teachers first before we put communication out.
9B, school committee meeting schedule?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You drive. Historically, we've gone for the first and third Tuesday of the month. Um, and then it seems like every year, we have to adjust and modify our schedule. So I know this conversation about this in the spring, I mean, prior to the pandemic, that why don't we come up with one locked schedule for the entire year? So behind me, you're going to see a schedule. You know, outline a potential meeting date for this year, which echoes and mimics what we've done in the past. Um, you know, we take into consideration ample vacation, February vacation, and develop plan. I also want to draw your attention with the first day, July 21st. So that's in two weeks. Um, I want to propose potentially that we have a school committee work session from 6:00 to 6:30 that evening. And then at 6:30, I would invite all members of the school committee to stay and participate in the task force meeting, uh, kind of what we just did, but at that stage where we are, to see and hear from the community members. I think it's valuable that you get a different parent perspectives, as well as some of the teachers that have the boots on the ground and hear from them. So I think that makes sense. The goal is to keep the school committee in the loop as much as possible as we go through with this uncharted waters at this point. So that'll be the only, uh, new addition to the calendar. Again, we have, usually have one or two meetings in August. Those are represented on the calendar. My thought would be we keep the next three meetings here at TES. And then if we can eventually get back to our regular meeting site at the high school, we will. Uh, but for the, for the time being, the summer meetings will be here. So happy to answer any questions that are proposed. this proposed schedule. And if the committee wants to review, we can take action in two weeks. We can do that as well. You know, it's just, just taking that.
In these Tuesdays? Could we hold off till the next meeting?
Sure.
If that's possible.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Needs to give.
This will go to the August 4th meeting.
Well, we can do a July 21 work session.
Okay.
Whatever.
So do we need to take a vote on meeting on July 21st?
Yes.
Does not have a regular scheduled meeting?
No. We originally scheduled a one-July meeting, but given the, the task force meets us to go without.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to accept the July 21st, 2020 meeting.
I'll second that.
Discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
Post? Kerry 700.
So Derek set up a Google Forms evaluation, which was probably the easiest evaluation I've ever partied so far. Been a hundred percent response for everybody. The evaluation subcommittee met, and based on the language in Dr. Flanagan's contract, which took the majority response, and that's how we were able to determine his evaluation for the year. So I will read the goals and his evaluation. So it's professional goals, district improvement goal, a FEDAS strategy for district improvement, that was met. Student learning goal, extended leadership, teen unit protocol, significant progress is needed. Professional practice goal, MSBA in school building committee, that was met. The ratings on each standard, overall rating for standard one, instructional leadership, proficient. Overall rating for standard two, management and operations, proficient. Overall rating for standard three, family and community engagement, proficient. Overall rating for standard four, professional culture, proficient. The rating for the overall summative performance based on step one and step two ratings above was proficient. So thanks for having a great idea, Dr. Flanagan. Appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank the committee for their support and their feedback. I think that's something I value, and I think it's a heart, and I will work to improve on the issue.
111, finance. Mr. Messina?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In your drive, you might see an abundance of signing of bills and signing of payroll. Tonight, I presented four FY20, excuse me, five FY20 bill warrants. The warrant numbers, accounts, amounts are in that drive. Also tonight, there was one FY21 bill warrant. That is also in your drive. The single sign-on, Mr. Mullen came in on June 16th and approved 10 bill warrants that day, as well as coming in on June 30th and approving 12 bill warrants on that day. And those are in the drive as well. For signing of payroll, there are two in your drive. The first is the two June FY20 warrants with the warrant numbers and amounts, as well as the first payroll of FY21, and that is the last signing of payroll in your drive. And that's it.
Thank you very much. School committee discussion. Start by Flanagan.
I'd just want to recognize the, the work of, of all the people involved with committees and the task force. It's been, it's been extensive. It's been extensive over the past six weeks. And, you know, these decisions aren't fun, but they're important and they're necessary where we are right now. And, you know, I just publicly commit that we're going to do the very best we can for our kids. I mean, they're at the front of our mind, every decision we make. And I wish we could go to best practice everywhere, but it's going to be best solutions in some places, and that's what we're going to do. Let's just hope for vaccines soon enough.
Thank you.
I'm good. Thank you.
Mostad, thank you.
I would like to thank Dr. Flanagan for the presentation this evening and putting these task forces together. And nobody could have predicted back in March what we were going to go through. This is not a typical summer for our administrators, our principals, and the whole staff, Mr. Messina, and what you do. So I'd just like to thank each and every one of you. There was no guidebook on how to do this. There are 1,650 kids in Teens World Schools that they're responsible for. We're going to make a lot of decisions, I think, over the course of the next couple of months that are going to be difficult for some people, but we do it with all 1,650 kids in mind, not just our own. And I think it's very, very important. As parents, we want things certain ways. As school community members, in the community as a whole, we have to look at what we do with preschool. What is in the best interest of all 1,650 kids that we're responsible for? So I commend you guys. I thank you very much for all the time and work that you guys put into this. Thank you.
Tony kind of stole my thunder because I was going to, I, I want to thank Dr. Flanagan for pulling the subcommittees together for the reopening task force. I know it's not something that was required by any governing body for you to pull these task forces together. It's that, you know, you and your staff recognize that there's a, a community concern and that these, you know, students are the number one priority. So there's a lot that goes on in the background. We, more than any of us know. And I, I really appreciate everything that you're doing to pull these task forces together. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm good.
What Rebecca and Anthony set up there. Thank you very much for all your work. I'll keep it a little more brief.
I'll try to keep brief too. But I thank you so much for presenting to us tonight. I think the communication is the key going forward to the school committee and to the whole Teens World Public School District. Because, you know, like Rebecca said, they just don't know. A lot of people don't know all that's happening in the background, and it's incredible the amount of work this is going to take to pull off these plans. And by putting all these committees together, I know firsthand by being on the curriculum committee, I was just, I'm really impressed by all the minds that are together, really thinking through this. And their whole focus is best practices the whole time, and that's, that's just amazing. As, as much as we can within this framework, as Dr. Flanagan said, sometimes we might not be able to do best practices, practices, but that's our goal. And it may not start that way, but it'll move that way. So I thank you. Sorry, Jeffrey, but thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Great to.
I'd like to welcome Mr. Vogt, who's first meeting. Thank you for joining us. Graduates of the, you know, echo from everybody else. I'm on the UTRAC committee with Mr. Messina. I'm on the task force. There's a lot of work going on, and it's great to see, especially on the task force, all the different stakeholders from different areas of life and hearing their comments and bringing up issues and concerns that I wouldn't have thought of. So I think that's really key to finding the best solution, hearing from all different types of people. With that said, we do have a need for executive session to conduct strategy sessions, preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. We will turn from executive session only to adjourn the regular session meeting. This action requires a rule call vote.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor. Kerry 700. Good night, everybody.